For the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, with whose justice is the ultimate.
At this time, I'll take a roll call of attendance. Members want to announce your presence?
Jacque Donahue, present.
Paul Vines Jr., present.
Saiga Antonetti, present.
Rachel Ryan, present.
Eric Markowitz, present.
Rob Kane, present.
Ken DeMares, present.
Before we open it up for discussion, just to want to put out a couple of things. I know certainly it's been nine years since our last Charter Revision Commission. When it's your time to come up, please go to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. We've been charged, as you know, by the Town Council to look at the Charter. We've had two charges to update and make any changes that we deem necessary, updating names in some of the state laws that have changed over the last nine years, and we take recommendations by the public, and that's why our hearing tonight. We will be holding another public hearing in a few months. We'll certainly put out notice of when that will be, and we will have typically our idea is to have a meeting in August and then ramp it up to two meetings after that, after the summer months are over. We know it's a difficult time for everyone considering vacations and travel. The second charge is to consider an alternate charter to present to the people and give them a choice. These are our charges from the Town Council. When we finish our work, we will provide a report to the Town Council. They can look at it, approve it, disapprove it, any parts, and of course, send it back to us saying that they do or do not accept changes that we recommend. We will consider their recommendations, and doesn't necessarily mean we have to accept their recommendations, but certainly we can send it back to them at that point and then have another public hearing. If they decide they want to accept it, they will put it out to referendum. Any recommendations, anything you want to ask, the only thing I would have to say is that we are here to listen certainly. So, at this point, I'll open it up for public participation, and please step to the microphone. And just, we do have a pretty good crowd here tonight, so I would ask, you know, if you can keep your comments relatively short, we can always go to a second round if people feel the need. So, at this point, I'll open it up for discussion.
Al Mickle, 95, Woodvine Avenue. Congratulations. This is going to be a challenge, and I wish you all the luck and good fortune and use all the smarts you've got. As I was sitting at work today, I was trying to write down little notes about what I would like to talk about tonight, and some of them are just administrative stuff, which is pretty straightforward. We talked earlier before the meeting about email notifications. I would like to see the minutes in the town website, if I could, that can happen, and a schedule of the meetings posted sometime in the future when you finally decide what dates and where they're going to be. Some of the things I chatted down, I just happened to reread the minutes of the last Charter Revision Commission, and one of the things I mentioned then, and I still mention tonight, during your meetings, are you going to have public participation, either before or after or both? It is, in the last Charter Revision Commission, I think it turned out quite well for the Commission hearing the public's input on the types of topics you were discussing in that evening. So, I would hope that you do have some public participation. One of the last things, well, not last things, one of the things I mentioned in the last thing, does the Charter Revision Commission have a budget? Does it have a limit on how much money it can spend? Is there a line item in the town accounting system for the money that's going to be spent? It's always good to know how much money things cost. I don't see any lights in the back room. Is there any thought about using Ustream to stream these meetings, where the broader public can see what goes on during these meetings, and you might be able to get more participation if they see what's going on? Now, you mentioned your goals is to review the things in the Charter and make revisions and commissions and things like that, and I was just curious, and that's probably a question for the Town Council, not you. The law requires you, the town, to revisit the Charter on a regular basis. Doesn't mean you have to do anything about it before the last one nine years ago, it was 27 years before we revisited the Constitution. So, you can just visit it if you want. Now, the one thing that I did notice, I was reading the Charter as it was revised by the Munich Code Company, when they were cleaning it up for spelling mistakes and moving things around to be in order, and one of the things I noticed is they removed the ethics ordinance from the Charter. I think it was section either four or six, I'm not sure what side of the V the I was on. I would suggest you put the ethics back in the Charter. Right now, the ethics ordinance is, I would say flawed, because the Subcommittee of the Town Council is the Ethics Commission reviewer. Now, they're the people that point to people on boards and commissions. They themselves could be liable for ethics violations. So, if you do put it back in the Charter, which I think you should, I think you should look at those types of issues that were brought up previously when the Independent Party brought its suggestion for the Ethics Commission to be adopted. Thank you.
Thank you. Floor is wide open.
Rose Soboleski, 456 Davis Street, Oakville. You mentioned that in a couple of months, you might do a public hearing again. Is that like at a midway point, or are you thinking more that the second one would happen at the end? More at the end?
More likely towards the end. We have, but to Al Mickle's point, we still have to set a schedule, but more likely toward the end, yeah.
Okay. I figured it was going to take this commission a lot longer than just a couple of months anyway, but I just want to clarify that. I like his idea about adding public participation to your agendas, so I hope that comes true. And is this being recorded by any chance, our comments and such?
You know, I see someone in the room, he's waving, so I'm taking that as a yes.
Okay, good, okay.
Make sure you get my good side.
Don't want anything to be, you know, missed. All right, so I wanted to mention that I think there was some talk about maybe changing our current form of government, and I wanted to give my take on that, that I would be against going to a mayor form of government for our town. It isn't necessary. We're really a small village community, and such a position would be costly and there'd be no term limits. So, I much prefer the Town Council form. The rest of my input is going to relate to the Finance and Taxation Section, Chapter 7, so I have a few areas that I want to talk about. But one thing I want to refer to first, I happened to look at, and I don't know if everybody would be familiar with this, but the GAO, the U.S. Government Accountability Office, did a summary in December, and I guess it's an annual summary that they do. They look at state and local governments' fiscal outlook, and for 2018, they projected out for 50 years, the next 50 years. And what they concluded, I didn't read the whole report, it's a little lengthy, but they have a chart that supports this, they have references to where their materials come from, but basically, their model shows that both revenue and spending is going to increase over time, over those 50 years, and that spending will rise faster than revenue intake. And they follow that up with that healthcare costs are largely going to drive the spending increases, so spending on health benefits for state and local government employees and retirees are going to be big. And we've already experienced health benefit issues here with our budget in recent years that was a little out of hand. So, I'm going to refer to Section 703. There's a sentence, I believe the sixth sentence, second one from the end, the section pertains to laying of the tax. The Town Council shall lay such tax on such list as shall be sufficient in addition to such revenue surplus, if any, as may be appropriated, not only to pay the expenses of the town for such current year, but also to absorb the revenue deficit of the town, if any, at the beginning of such current year. And for those not familiar with accounting terms, revenue deficit occurs when the actual amount of revenue and/or the actual amount of expenditures does not correspond with the budgeted revenue and expenditures. It doesn't mean that the town's out of money, or that there's no money available to spend. It means that your budgeted revenue and expenses were overshadowed, too much was spent, or you didn't get enough revenue in that you expected. So, we can say, if anyone's ever attended the Town Council meetings of the last several years, that we've had a revenue deficit within those last few years. So, the rules of this Charter provision were violated. They never went back, excuse me, the violation is they never went back to appropriate, to set up anything to correct that revenue deficit. So, in Section 704, which follows this, it seems like a remedy is offered for such a case, and at the fourth sentence, it says, "Such appropriation may be financed by borrowing, and the amount of such borrowing shall be included in and made part of the tax next levied." So, when a revenue deficit occurs, so that was the end of the quote, when a revenue deficit occurs, there are actually three more ways to remedy it, and this language should probably be included here, just so that you know that there are other remedies, not just borrowing. You can cut spending, you can use an anticipated revenue received, like what if we sell some town buildings or town land? That's one way to raise revenue that you didn't expect, and that doesn't come from taxes. And you can also issue a tax increase, which could also include a supplemental tax. Then there's a sentence following this area in the same section. It limits the amount of appropriation from a contingent fund as not to exceed 2% of the total budgeted expenditures of current fiscal year administrative budget. I'd like to say I want to see this sentence kept intact as is. Again, we've had a revenue deficit within the last few years, and the rules of this Charter provision were violated. All anticipated spending should be covered in the budget, and an emergency appropriation is just that, sudden and unexpected. And those terms were kind of played with in the process of the events, and it wasn't taken care of as it should have been. And I'd also offer that there needs to be an addition to the last paragraph of Section 704, and what I would say is, so let me just read exactly what it says. "The reserve fund for capital and nonrecurring expenditures shall have a maximum unencumbered balance equal to 10% of the last town administrative budget." So, just with that sentence alone, it's only referring to a maximum unencumbered. I'd like to see a minimum unencumbered balance added, and my suggestion is that it be 8%. And I'd like to offer also that I think that 10% as a maximum should be raised to 15%. I believe we need this to build up the general fund balance for the security of our town finances. Now, I'm going to go back to Section 702 after I've stated what I have here. I recommend that-
Sorry, I have a question for you. On 704, do you not think that 2% is a low figure?
Do I not think that it's a low figure? Not to exceed 2%.
The Council may include a recommended appropriation for contingent fund and the amount not to exceed 2%.
Right. I think that it's, I'm saying that not to exceed 2% to take that much out of our general fund, and I believe, but I can't, I didn't check it, that I think more than 2% had been taken out for the issues that we've had in the past, so that would be a violation. So, I'm saying they didn't-
Right, so I'm asking you, is in that 2% a low figure then?
No, I don't think it's too low.
In your estimate, no? Thank you.
Okay, so it's Section 702. I recommend that you add an item, which would be if it's in this section, I'm thinking it belongs in this section, but if not, maybe another discussion can be brought up, but I would call it Item E, and that would be for the Town Manager to add a line item to the budget to list the amount of money necessary, excuse me, to replenish the general fund for any deficit that falls below an established minimum unencumbered balance as set in Section 704. So, that, so I'm saying that refers to if we establish that minimum, which I'm requesting, that he then present what we need to bring that balance back up. At the same time, it should be included in the budget recommendation the Town Manager sends to the Town Council, and going forward from that point, and no time shall this figure be adjusted during the budget referendum process of the current fiscal year. It's like if he identifies it, what we're short, that number can't be changed if, let's say, a budget fails the referendum. You go back, and usually you have to adjust numbers. Well, you can't adjust that number, that number has to go to the general fund. And then, when the budget is eventually passed and enforced, that tax revenue collected is immediately replenished to the general fund. And one last thing, Section 707, I'd like that whole section kept intact, word for word, as is. This is the only section of the Charter that provides any consequence for inappropriate actions within the whole Charter, and in this case, it's just talking about financial violations. I don't want to see that disappear.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I was impressed when you mentioned the GAO. I thought I was the only one who knew about the GAO. That was obscure.
It's good information.
Anyone else?
Hi, Catherine Camer, 31 Cottage Place in Oakville. I wrote everything, most of this down, and hopefully I'll be able to keep this flowing smoothly. I'd like to start by addressing Charter Section 311. Section 311 has been in existence in the form it is today since the Charter was first adopted in July 1961. This section has never been revised, and as I understand, it was never used by a resident until I came along. It states that "The Council shall have the power to investigate any and all departments, offices, and agencies of the town, and for such purpose shall have the power to issue subpoenas. At the request of the Council, any judge may issue a capes for the appearance of witnesses and the production of books and papers." That's all Section 311 says, and it's very vague. It does not specify where the reasoning for an investigation initiates, and I would argue that it is not just for the Council to initiate, but that this section is intended also as an avenue for residents to request investigations when they take issue with the use of their tax dollars. There is no other section in Charter that allows for the residents to question the activities of departments, offices, and agencies of the town. As a regular attendee of the Town Council meetings, I can tell you that the Council does nothing with questions or requests that are made to them. Section 311 is the only avenue for residents to request their government to address issues. Within the past few years, I have asked for several 311 investigations. Each one was given directly to the town attorney and was never even considered by the Town Council, which is what Section 311 basically says, it's for the Town Council. I think that's a shame, as the Council should want to resolve issues without using taxpayer money for legal fees incurred by involving the town attorney. Recently, Attorney Jessel advised the Council that if a resident requests an investigation under Section 311, that it is to be treated only as a suggestion. It's very important that this Charter Review Commission determine exactly what our founding fathers, so to speak, intended of this section. I think it means a little bit more than just a suggestion. Now, here's an example of what happens when a resident can't request a 311 investigation. Suppose the issue's with the town attorney. If a resident cannot request an investigation by the Town Council, the only recourse is to file a grievance with the Connecticut Statewide Grievance Committee. That seems rather harsh for the town attorney as resolving an issue, and this town arena would be much better for their professional career. This would be true of other departments. I would think we would want to keep Watertown business in Watertown. So, I think it should be considered about these investigations of things that are local to us, it should stay local to us, because there are other avenues that are outside the local purview. So, again, I'm just going to say, Section 311 is very vague. The residents need an avenue to request the Town Council to investigate issues in departments, offices, and agencies that our tax dollars support. I think the section needs an overhaul. Another section of the Charter I would like you to review and revise is Section 401, Town Attorney. First, the Town Council should be limited to those names received in writing from the Town Manager as to proposed applicants for the position of a Town Attorney. The Town Manager's efforts are paid for by the taxpayers and should be acceptable. Change the language that the Town Council will be limited to those names received in writing from the Town Manager. That's the request that I have. You would also note that in Paragraph 2, it states that "The Attorney shall have an office within a 20-mile radius of the town boundary." Obviously, this has been ignored for decades. Another vague area, if it was the founding father's intention that the town attorney work outside the town boundary, they certainly must have meant for them to live outside the town boundary. With the mandate that they work outside the boundary, I believe that the town attorney should also live outside the town boundary. The town attorney should not be a resident of Watertown. If this commission disagrees and does not want to make a change of that, then I think you would have to seriously consider language that the town attorney cannot have any active involvement with any of the town's political party committees. That's a matter of ethics. And also, to shore up ethics, the town attorney should probably be hired with a five-year contract and be limited to one term. I don't know if this would be something for the Charter, but I keep saying that the town attorney's opinions should be on the web site, because we do pay for those, and the people should be able to see those. And lastly, I want to comment, well, no, actually, this isn't lastly, but I do want to comment on the use of the word "shall" within the Charter. It's the most misused word in all the legal language. In any revisions that you make to the Charter, I urge you to use the terms "will" or "must", and to go over every section and eliminate the word "shall," as it's subject to interpretation and will not help anyone to have a clear understanding of the Charter. The vagueness of the Charter means that residents incur fees for legal opinions and how to interpret it, and that has to stop. Removing the term "shall" would be a step in the right direction. I also would like to ask consideration in Sections 402 and 403 to have similar language that's used for the Police Commission, Section 404, Part B, because there's no distinction that an appointment by the Town Council to fill a vacancy, Planning and Zoning, or the P&amp;Z Board of Appeals has to select a replacement member from the same political party as the person who vacated. So, it's really just that Section 402 and 403, I don't understand why they don't correspond with Section 404, Part B. It just would clean everything up for the boards and commissions. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question of the Speaker?
Sure.
I don't know if mine's on, I'll keep my voice up. Section 311, what would you propose? You said that the language is vague, and I'm not sure how specific you would propose a change be.
Well, I think it should identify whether or not, who can bring the suggestion of an investigation to the Town Council. It doesn't say anything here whether a resident can or cannot, so it doesn't say anything where, they have the power to investigate, but where are they getting the initiative to do so? And so, I have a town attorney right now who's saying, well, they, if it's a suggestion, I don't believe it's a suggestion, I think it's pointed that they should investigate.
So, is it your idea that the language should be compulsory, that the Council must investigate when?
Yeah, if they get a request, then they must investigate. They don't, they can say there's nothing there to investigate, obviously, but they have to do something with it. They can't just let it go.
And here's a dumb question, and I'm not trying to be argumentative, but would an investigation be defined under Definition Section in the Charter? I mean, would an investigation be enough for the Town Council, say, to caucus on an issue and come out and say, we've decided there's nothing to investigate? I'm just trying to clarify, how specific do you suggest the language should be?
Well, you know, I didn't know that if I would be asked this question, so I guess I could ever, I could come back with something more specific another time if we have the opportunity, or if you're doing public participation. I mean, I'm not prepared right now to give you what I would think it should say. I just, I just think it, I do believe that it's one of the only areas that seems to at least give the residents an opportunity to say, hey, I've got a problem with X department, I think you should investigate this. And then you're being told, well, no, it's not, it's not for the residents. I disagree. I think it is something the residents could do. This is our tax money that's being spent. So, I could write something.
All right, and through the Chair, do you think that it should perhaps follow the FOI or some other sunshine law? Part of that, had you looked at any of those or not?
I do a lot with FOI, but I wouldn't want to answer you that question right now. I didn't know that, pardon me, but most of the meetings I attend, I don't get asked to participate very much. So, I wasn't prepared for that, but I could definitely prepare. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question?
Sure. Madam, ma'am, don't go away.
I told you I'm not used to this.
So, at a very minimum, what you're looking for, because you're absolutely correct, this doesn't have any clarification, or there's nothing that says who can initiate an investigation, just that they will have the power to investigate any or all departments, but nothing as to who can actually bring a question of-
An issue, an issue that you think should be investigated, correct?
And you found difficulty with the word "shall." To me, "shall" always meant "must."
I agree with you, but not everybody shares that. So, there's differing opinion, you could go, you know, go online tonight, you could see, you know, 100 different ways to interpret that. So, I think that that's what I'm asking you when I said about "shall," is that I think, number one, I think it should just be taken out of the Charter completely and replaced with exactly what it is you want to do in all areas, not just that one.
And when you talked about the Town Attorney for the section, you believe that the opinions that they have come up with should be on the web? Is that what you said? I wasn't-
Yes, yes. There's a lot of money that's, taxpayer money that's spent on the opinions, and the opinions a lot of times have to do with the Charter. There's an opinion on how, you know, so why have somebody come back and ask again? You know, at least, at least the opinions that pertain to the Charter, I'm sorry, I probably wasn't clear on that. probably wasn't clear on that, should be able to be located so that if someone is looking at the charter, thinks they have an issue with it, and an opinion has already been written on that, they can refer to that.
So currently, if you wanted to see what the town attorney's opinion had been on an issue, what is the process or procedure you have to use?
Most likely, you'd have to go through FOI, an FOI request, and pay for the request. But again, I think that if we're paying for the opinion to begin with, it should be able to be very easily located.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else who don't like to run back and sit down?
Thank you. Anyone else care to speak?
Hi, excuse me, Anne DeBronte, 232 Buckher Hill Road, and again, thank you all for volunteering to do this, it's very exciting. I wasn't involved with town politics until about 2013, and, you know, I, obviously, many of you know, I've had some issues where, you know, for clarification, or you can't, you know, things like boards and commissions, I'm gonna bring it up, that I just couldn't believe that there was the innate conflict of interest happening. So that was sort of my beginning of understanding what the charter was all about, and over the years, many of you have been on boards and have been wonderful, and we've eventually all worked together. But it's time to clean that up, if you will. In all these years, there's been other towns, certainly even at the state level, there's been a lot of work done around ethics, and changing it so that it's understood by all what the rules are. Many, many towns have stopped having people on boards and commissions that work directly in town. Of course, everyone wants the engineers and the land people, you know, and the developers and so forth, but people who have knowledge, but not necessarily able to make money in the town that they're making the decisions. It's just the cleaner, better way to do business. So that is one thing with the Charter Review, with appointment of boards and commissions, if the commission would be so kind as to research, and I know we have some research, we don't have it here tonight, about what other towns are doing in their charters to kind of put the rules in about who can be on boards and commissions, how they get appointed. Another thing to look at is maybe the length of terms. I think we're at six years now for most of them, is it four or six? Some are six, some are four? Four. I apologize, I know there was some that was six.
Planning and zoning is the only one that's six, I think, right? Planning and zoning, I think, is the only one that's-
Planning and six, right?
Planning and zoning, that's the only one.
Right, yeah, these are things to look at, to see if that needs to change. That's quite a long time for someone to be on a commission, and it's wonderful, but if there's some issues and the person has to constantly recuse themselves because they're making decisions about properties in town, you know, it's something to look at, and I would appreciate if we would do that, on all the boards and commissions, especially the land use ones, because obviously, our town is growing and it's exciting, the plan of development, should it be followed, could be very exciting, but we want to have a nice, we want to be looked at as the people that are always being progressive and inclusive. And that's my next statement, inclusive. I am unaffiliated. I know many people think I'm independent, or I'm this, or I'm, well, never mind what I am, but I'm unaffiliated. And the last check, the town of Watertown was 47% of your voting block was unaffiliated. I don't know if that's increased since last year. We are getting a lot of younger and new people in town, families, you may find that many of them are unaffiliated. I have pros and cons on both Republicans and Democrats, that's why I'm unaffiliated. I can agree and disagree on both sides, and I think there's a lot of people that do that. But it's very unfortunate that the unaffiliated are completely kept out of our town government, regarding being put on boards and commissions, and serving the town. Again, there's unaffiliated that, like, one day, oh, I like what the Democrats are saying, or I like the Democrats, you know, as far as a party making money and getting support. Well, that can happen through your unaffiliates, according to what you're proposing for the town. But to be completely ignored for any commissions, I think, needs to be really, really looked at. Our town, you know, I have some information here from the Secretary of State, and they consider unaffiliated as a minority party in many towns. So I would really appreciate it if our town, through the Charter Review, could seriously take a look at coming up with a way where people that are unaffiliated could make their intentions known, if they want to be on a board or a commission, and maybe through the town manager. I think Woodbury and Southbury are using the town manager. So if someone's unaffiliated, they post a position on planning and zoning, people that are interested use the town manager as their conduit to have their name considered. So again, that's again through the Charter Review, if we could please look at that, I'd really appreciate it, and I think we'd get some wonderful, talented people that want to serve our town. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Being an independent party member, please consider us also, thank you.
Anyone else care to speak? Okay, I guess before we close the public hearing, I'd ask if August 27th works for the members to hold our next meeting? And I think Mr. Mickel's right, we do need to create a schedule, but in the meantime, that's a Tuesday, August 27th, does that work for everyone?
Yeah.
Yes, pretty good. Okay, so we'll set our next meeting for August 27th, and I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I won't be here on the 27th, but anyway.
Okay.
If the majority can be here, fine, I just can't be here.
Mr. Chair?
Sure.
Would that be at the same time, 7 o'clock?
Yeah.
Just want to make sure we set that.
Franklin, that works with you?
I believe so.
Okay.
We need to close the public hearing.
Well, I was gonna entertain a motion to adjourn. Do we have to close the public hearing first?
I think so. Doesn't that make sense?
Yeah.
I think a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Meeting adjourned, thank you, everyone.
Motion to adjourn.
I don't think we need a motion to adjourn.
Will you be here?
Yes, well, we almost had a conflict tonight with the Board of Education, but it worked out, so yes, that's gonna be our attempt, is to be here, yes.
All right.